Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order being four o'clock PM, Melanie, for the record. I'll read the land acknowledgement and then we'll get into the agenda. We respectfully acknowledge that the county of Halliburton is located on Treaty 20, Michisagin Territory and in the traditional territory of the Michisagin and Chipewa Nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations, which are Kerbal Lake, Rama, Hiawatha, Alderville, Skugog Island, Bosale and Georgina Island First Nations. We acknowledge the shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original indigenous inhabitants as stewards of its land and waters since time immemorial. May I have a first motion? Melanie will be to adopt the agenda. Mover and seconder to adopt the agenda, please. Lisa and Walt, thank you very much. Motion carried. Hang on, I'm just getting my notes organized here. Okay. Any declarations of pecuniary interest either now or as it will come up on the agenda? Please let us know, okay? Consent agenda, which consists of the adoption of the draft minutes of the last regular meeting, March 13th. The librarians report, the circulation statistics and working committee reports. Are there any questions on any of items in the consent agenda? We can bring them forward and discuss them now. If not, could I have a mover, a seconder for the consent agenda, please? Moved by Cease, seconded by?
Adele.
Adele, okay, thank you very much. All in favor? Carried. Andrea, the item six of financial reports.
Uh, yes, so the numbers have been uploaded into Questica based on the finalized version of our 2024 budget. Um, a couple of things to note, um, under revenue line sixteen. Uh, I just requested from Andrea Robinson, Director of Corporate Services, to pull out, to separate out the friends of the Halliburton County Public Library contributions, uh, separate from contributions that we get to other sources. And that's just gonna help us, um, when we're tracking the budgets for things that the friends pay for. Um, so it's not a change in any way to the budget, it's just, uh, being tracked separately so we can match things up, um, more easily. Um, other than that, uh, I note that I had for page two, um, the small tools and equipment line, you'll see that that is, uh, thirty-five thousand five hundred. And that's where the funds for the, uh, Dorset furnishings have been, that's the line that those designated funds have been put into. So as we start, um, getting charges through our RFP for that, that's where those will appear. And so you'll recall that that money has come, um, from our reserves or we agreed upon, um, uh, in twenty twenty-three. Um, and then, other than that, oh, and actually, sorry, the other Dorset purchases, you can see them, they've been added in the ninety-nine, purchases line under books and hardware. Um, so books, um, Cheryl has been, uh, working with library bounds. We've got, I think, about ninety-seven percent of the those books ordered and, um, the IT has purchased, uh, quite a lot of our um, tech equipment that we are naming for Dorset. Um, so that is where we are at. At present time. Um, in addition, so it's separate from the, uh, financial report, uh, in the agenda, I did get an email from uh, Andrea Robinson confirming the final year-end surplus um, from last year and the amount is eighty-two thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and nineteen cents. Uh, and you'll remember that at our previous meeting, um, uh, we agreed to, um, that amount into reserve. So that has been done. Um, at our May eighth meeting, uh, we'll have a presentation from Oscar Poloney from KPMG and he will present, um, our official uh, financial statements for the year. So that's at our May meeting.
Thank you. Um, I have to apologize. I was wanting to introduce somebody at the very beginning of the meeting and I actually forgot, which I often do these days.
Hillary, yeah.
Yes.
Montgomery has joined us today.
Her name is, her name is Hillary Montgomery. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, Hillary, welcome aboard. Hillary is the, uh, temporary, um, deputy CEO until June. Remember we, um, Andrea was gonna rotate a few things around and this is, um, Hillary's the first one up. I apologize, Hillary, for not doing that at the beginning of the meeting. You'll get used to me. Sometimes I don't remember my name. Anyway, uh, thank you for the, uh, financial updates. Andrea, questions? Cease, I see you have your hand up. And Adele.
Yeah, I've opened, I've opened the attachment that basically at the top says Halliburton County Actual to Budget. And I gotta be honest, I have no idea what I'm looking at.
Um, so this is the report that we download from the Questica software. So on the, in the left-hand column is the amount, uh, designated for each budget line. And then the year-to-date actual cost is the amount that had been coded in those lines so far. So the amount that we have invoices for and that's gone through the, the process of, um, Melanie coding the, you know, which things go where. And so what we've actually spent is in the year YTD actual cost. And then the further two columns on the right-hand side, that, um, those indicate the amount that, uh, is like under or over what we have budgeted for.
What's remaining.
Yes, yeah. The percentage variance, yeah.
Yeah.
So you can see that the, um, the amount that we, um, will be getting from the, the county has not been transferred. So it's been budgeted for, um, but it hasn't actually been deposited in the Y, year-to-date actual cost of them. Does that make sense?
Uh, not really, but I guess I'll just go with it for now until some of the numbers start to straighten themselves out. I guess once we start receiving some of the money or we start dealing with it, then it'll kind of sort itself out because at the moment, I'm looking at the top and it says minus ninety-nine point fifty-four.
Yeah.
Um, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around it, but.
Cease, you're right. That'll balance, as the revenues come in, the, um, the municipal, um, amount doesn't come in until, um, the budget is completed, um, we, we, and, and the provincial money doesn't come in until almost the end of the year. So we don't look for that until next March, probably. Um, or, or later this year, sorry. So, um, those are, those, those negatives will all balance out as, as the revenues come in. We know what it is. Um, and so it shows as a negative now, but what, what is listed as expected is what will actually come in those particular cases.
For example, the, the provincial amount.
Go ahead, Cease. Cease, go ahead.
So the number that makes sense on what we've spent so far this year, where we are, is the second column from the left. Is that correct?
Yes.
So that's the revenues we've collected so far. And so, so far, we're three hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars total expenses.
Yeah.
Am I close? All right, that, that's kind of sort of where I'm trying to.
Okay, but you'll, you'll see as, as these meetings go out and the financial reports keep coming through, you'll see those numbers begin to shift and, and the blanks will fill in. It's just the way the budget is structured, that's all.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Adele, you had your hand up, sorry?
I did, yes. And this, um, this is a question about a motion we had made that's reflected partially in the budget. Um, we had made a motion in order to, um, start moving on the opening of the Dorset branch, that we would take up to sixty-three thousand dollars from reserves to cover all the costs of the opening the Dorset branch. Um, subject to speaking with Algonquin Highlands about the it's the capital costs that would normally be covered by a municipality. And I'm wondering who was doing those, um, having those discussions? How much Algonquin Highlands is going to contribute? Um, because I believe that when branches open, there are there are certain costs that are covered by the municipality and certain costs that are covered by the board. So I'm wondering if those discussions have taken place and whether Algonquin Highlands has, um, come to the table with what they can offer as the other municipalities do.
I think the, um, uh, Andrea or, or Jen maybe could respond to that question. Maybe Jen, if you want to start?
Sure, um, correct me if I'm, uh, if, if my memory is sieve-like on this. What I believe we had landed on at this table was that was that the library board would agree to withdraw from reserves up to a certain amount.
Yeah.
Um, which would include those traditionally held municipal capital costs. And then anything above and beyond that would be, um, discussed with the municipality and to date, unless something has happened that I'm not aware of, as we, this table has not submitted costs above and beyond what we anticipated from reserves, Algonquin Highlands does not anticipate making any contribution. Would, it would continue, anticipate or consider doing that should something be presented, but so far nothing has been presented. Andrea, is that your understanding as well?
Yes, so that we may need a contribution from Algonquin Highlands depending on what happens with our RFP process. So we have, uh, our initial, we put out the RFP. We, um, had, um, no proponents put forward, um, proposals in the end from our first process. We took some feedback from the people who didn't apply, um, who had, uh, initially indicated their interest. And we redid some aspects of the proposal. It has gone out again in an updated version. The, uh, question deadline has passed. We, um, have put together information for, to respond to the questions that we received. Uh, the final deadline for people to submit their, um, their RFP proposals is on Friday, not this Friday, but next Friday. Um, in this version, um, of the RFP, we did indicate that thirty-five thousand dollars was our approximate, um, guess of the budget. So in the first version, we didn't put any budget amount and that's one of the things that people were asking about. Um, so we will see what comes in with that kind of as a guideline in that we put in our documentation. And so then we'll see what comes in. Hopefully this time we will actually get submissions and we'll see where we are if our kind of guess of it could be around thirty-five thousand dollars is way off base or not. And then, so if it is more than that, then we'll have to pursue um, first through this table and then, uh, depending on what happens here, we would approach Algonquin Highlands to figure out the difference. So where we are in the timeline, we're still waiting for that information, which we should get next week. Next Friday is the deadline, then we review and then we'll have next steps.
Okay, thank you. Lisa?
So more to Adele's question, um, this was discussed at county council. And of course, the other three municipalities, you know, had the concern because we all had to, um, purchase the, the furniture for our libraries and the warden, you know, had said at the time that she felt because Algonquin Highlands didn't necessarily get the same library service that the rest of us have had for years, that she felt it was, um, something that the county should do. So, and that's where it kind of went.
And that's correct. That's, uh, as I remember it. So, um, Andrea, when, when do you think you'll have the final, uh, proposals submitted? You said next week?
Friday is the deadline, next Friday is the deadline, and then we'll need to review them all, uh, score them. Um, so yeah, there's a bit of a process. So, but we, at this point, like I haven't seen any of them, so I don't know how our thirty-five thousand dollar estimate is.
Do, do you know if, since you put out the second proposal or the second phase or the second version of it, have you had any submissions?
I, I don't know the answer to that. No.
Okay.
It's, uh, Kate Lovett at the county, county coordinator, that's, uh, handling the, the back end of that. We'll, we'll find out on Friday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Any other questions of Andrea on the finances? Okay, seeing none, I have a motion.
Jackie has a question.
Pardon?
Jackie's question.
Jackie, sorry, I can't see you very well. And then followed by Cease. Go ahead, Jackie.
Uh, my question is with regard to the RFP, um, I'm just curious as to what were the reasons that the suppliers gave for not, um,
Yeah, so not having the budget information in there. We didn't provide, we provided, uh, provided information about the square footage, but not specifics about the layout, like where the electrical was and, um, just more.
So they wanted more detail.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
That's not uncommon for that to happen. Uh, Cease, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think the, I'm, I just don't know whether or not it's the way the municipal government operates because in, in terms of, of like, when I look at percentage variance, it, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me. The, the number that would make sense to me is, is the percentage year-to-date that's been used. In other words, we have taxation. Uh, the, the number isn't minus one hundred, it's zero. We have received zero so far. Uh, federal funding, we have received zero. So the, the numbers is what's screwing me up. I'm, I, I just can't learn either. I guess I gotta learn how to reread it. But normally to me, if you got, if you've received nothing, then it's zero. If you've received ten percent of it, it's ten percent.
Yeah.
But, but the variance is, 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 yeah, I guess it's a hundred percent variance because you haven't received anything. But it would make a heck of a lot more sense if we got a consumption rather than, than, than a, than, than a negative, like if, if we've, if we've spent uh, on wages, how much percentage have we saved? Minus seventy-nine percent doesn't do a whole lot for me, but if you said we've spent twenty-six percent or I guess based on this, it would be twenty-one percent of what, so now I know we have eighty percent left.
Yeah.
Th- this is kind of sort of backwards in the way you're trying to think. That's all I'm trying to get at. Is there a way we could?
Cease, I, I understand what you're saying and I guess I have a question on this for Andrea. Um, is, is, is the format that we're using, is that the standard format of the county for all of its accounts?
Yeah, it's the, the program. So we go, we log into a program and, uh, run the report. And this is, this is how it comes out.
Okay, so if, if the, if the county was waiting for a, a, a revenue from, say, the, the provincial government and they had budgeted a hundred thousand dollars and it wasn't here yet, it would show negative one hundred percent, right?
Correct.
Okay, so. Go ahead.
Um, so last year, our a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the provincial government was, it appeared the same way for the entire year and we actually received the amount from the provincial government, I think on the twenty-eighth, December twenty-eighth or something like that.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah.
So Cease, um, I hear what you're saying and I understand completely what you're saying. It makes abundant sense. But this is a standard reporting format that the county uses and we fall under their accounting, uh, platform and when we print off our stuff, we get it that way.
So I, I guess the answer is it's reciprocal of what we see here.
It is. I mean, we'd have to go back and ask the county to change the way it reports.
Yeah, they don't, they don't, they don't want to go that way.
No, we won't do that. Okay. Any other questions from the room? I can't see your hands up. Um, Walt, did I see your hand up or you're still twirling your glasses there? Okay, I thought so. All right, um, I have a motion then that, uh, says. Hang on for a sec. Melanie, read the motion, please.
Be it resolved, the Halliburton County Library Board accepts a financial report as presented.
Can I have a mover, please, and seconder? Moved by Lisa, seconded by Walt. All in favor? Motion carried. Uh, Walt, did you have a question? Okay. Um, any business arising from the minutes? I don't see any listed. Under new business, we have to approve the cost of living increases for the, um, non-union, uh, employees, uh, same as the county does. Uh, what happens is whatever the union gets, the, is passed on to the non-union employees. Is that right, Andrea?
Uh, so traditionally, the QP, uh, local ten, uh, nineteen sixty, uh, negotiates their contract. Um, and then once that's finalized, the non-union county staff adopt the same, uh, cost of living adjustment, um, increases that the union receives. And that practice has been that, um, as, uh, county staff get those increases, then we go through the motion here at the library board to approve the, the same increases that the QP members get, the county staff get, um, for library staff. So it's, um, uh, my understanding is that it's past practice that, that we adopt the same things here.
Yeah.
In fact, it benefits information and I think it's kind of a formality.
I had asked, I had asked Andrea if, um, if this motion was necessary by the board and it is, we've done it every year. That, um, contracts have been renegotiated. I was just under the assumption that because the library employees are, uh, fall into the grid system that's set up by the county as far as compensation goes, we just go with the flow and it happens, but apparently we've always passed a motion. So I have a motion here. Be it resolved, the Halliburton County Library Board receives the report on cost of living adjustments and benefit changes and that the cost of living increases negotiated by QP locals nineteen sixty and adopted by adopted for county non-unionized staff for the years twenty-four, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven be provided to the library staff members, effective pay period one of each year and that the benefit changes be adopted for library staff for policy HR seventeen, non-union compensation benefits. Uh, motion, please. A mover and seconder. Moved by Jen, seconded by, uh,
Cease?
No, and, oh, Cliff, sorry. Moved by Jen, seconded by Cliff. All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Um, the next item. Yep. Somebody have their hand up?
I didn't know who Cliff was.
Cliff, Cliff seconded. Jen, Jen moved and Cliff seconded.
Cease, you mean?
Pardon?
We're not sure who Cliff is. Do you mean Cease?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Yes, Cease, yeah, I'm sorry.
Come on.
Oh, my God.
I was due for a name change anyway.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, Cliff.
It's not a problem, as long as you don't call me late for something, I don't care.
Forever, he's known as Cliff.
I'm, 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 I'm involved with too many boards and share too many, I'm getting named. Bear with me. Okay, so the next item, um, i- is the, um, I, I think it's the municipal, uh, uh, roundtable. Um, I've had a, I've had a request from some members of the board that we give some consideration to, um, not necessarily having a meeting a month because our meeting uh, materials are not very, not very lengthy to begin with. I mean, we're barely half an hour, not even half an hour yet into this meeting. And so I did a little research today. I asked, um, Andrea if she could check out whether we have anything in our policy or the library, uh, Act with respect to the number of meetings that we have to hold in any given year. And we're required to hold seven meetings a year by law. We currently do ten. Um, we don't do July and August, so um, if we want to change from a monthly meeting to perhaps a bimonthly meeting over a, over a couple of months, uh, we could cut back three meetings a year of the board and still be within the legislation that requires us to have those seven meetings. Um, so we can either kick that around now, we've got a little bit of time where we could bring it up, bring it up at the next meeting after we maybe do a little more work. Um, I think, personally think it's a good idea. I think in some cases we don't need to meet on a monthly basis. Um, I, I think there are points in time during the year that we should be there. For instance, when the, when the auditors come in and, uh, talk to us or, um, or budget time. I can't hear you.
I'm wrong. I think that it's, um, kids outside in the hallway, David.
Oh, okay, all right. So anyway, I, I just throw that out there. I, I'm, I'm gonna let Lisa go first and then I think Adele, you had your hand up, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'll admit this, I, I sent this to David today after, um, county council, a few of us were sitting around and it just seemed like for today's meeting as an example, all of the information was basically something we could have just received as information. Um, Andrea does a wonderful job giving us our Friday updates and unless there's something pressing that actually requires a motion, it seems like a lot of work for staff too for those extra meetings. But, I mean, I'm willing to do whatever. It was just looking at the agenda today, I thought it seemed like a lot of, um, work for something that was going to last probably less than half an hour.
Thanks, Lisa. Um, Adele, you have your hand up and I think somebody else in the room has their hand up. I'm not sure. No? Okay, Adele, go ahead.
I, I'd be happy with less meetings. Um, I'm wondering if we can just keep the ten meetings in our calendar and then if there's really no business, then it's much easier to cancel a meeting than to schedule all of us to come to a meeting that may suddenly be necessary.
We could do that. That's one way to look at it. Um, I have I have Cease trial now, not Cliff, and, and then Jen.
And Paul, Dave Paul has his hand up.
Paul, okay, great, thank you. Go ahead, Cease.
My second name, my second name is Tom, if you choose that one.
Okay.
But within, just to give you an idea, Dave, of what we're doing, in Highlands East, we only meet once a month, but we have, we have tentatively booked the second month, which, second meeting, which is always on our agenda, but we don't activate unless we need it. So technically speaking, we meet on the second and the fourth Tuesday in the month.
Yeah.
Our main meeting is on the second Tuesday in the month, but if we need it, we have it on the fourth.
Yeah, you've got it booked. That's.
Why, why couldn't we do the same thing?
Yeah, I agree. Just out of curiosity, out of curiosity, Cliff, how often do you use the second meeting?
Uh, probably two, maybe three times a year. It really boils down to something that's, how important is it? Like, uh,
Yeah, yeah.
You know, budget time, obviously. Uh, and if there's an issue related to, uh, something that's happened that requires a special meeting, an example could be, uh, you know, somebody wanted something done very quickly and we didn't have time, a grant had to be approved or something like that, then, then we would have the second meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Um, Jen, and then, uh, I think Paul had his hand up. Okay, go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, thanks, George. So my thinking on that originally was, I wasn't, I wasn't all for it just because if we, if we retain that in our schedules, then it's not available for other things that might come up. And I mean, no problem with having a bit of free time, but you, we get half of the benefit that way of it, of it, um, potentially not being there, but always having it scheduled. But, but honestly, it probably is better to do it that way. Um, uh, so I don't, I, I don't mind just to keep the schedule, so long as perhaps we have an idea of of when that will be a yes or a no with enough time in advance that we can use that hour for extra things.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a really good point, Jen. I mean, I'd hate to give it up and then suddenly have to scramble to get everybody together. Um, and, and that, that's a very difficult thing to do on short notice. I think, uh, Paul, why don't you go ahead and then I'll give you my two cents. Go ahead.
Well, now that I've heard everybody's comments, I feel like I'm maybe making a somewhat schizophrenic kind of a comment. So I, I, I was gonna agree with Adele about, uh, um, keeping the, uh, the monthly meetings, but then it seems like when we have special meetings, uh, they need to be convened on short notice and there's some urgency to resolution of the issues, so it may not be that beneficial to keep the alternating schedule. So I, I'm not sure if I even know what I want to say. Like, like there are pros and cons to all of them, but I do think when we do have an urgent issue that requires a special meeting, it has to be done within a few days. So the, the monthly meeting wouldn't really cover that.
Yeah, and you know, Paul, uh, meetings, special meetings come up occasionally, all the time for, for almost every organization I'm involved with. And if it's really that important, we try. every organization I'm involved with, and if it's really that important, we try to make time for it. I, I think the idea of leaving them scheduled is a good one. It preserves the date in our calendar, which is critical. But at the same time, um, we have to have a mechanism, um, to advise you in, 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 in good, in a timely way that we're not going to do it, so you can use that time for something else. Um, maybe the thing to do is, uh, Walt, did you have your hand up before I go on? Go ahead.
No, I'm just, the, the hand needs to move.
Okay. You get, you should bring a hockey stick and squeeze it. Like the old days.
That, that's the problem. Too much squeezing of it.
Um, so we, the one way to do this, I've, I've done it in other instances, is you leave it to the call of the chair as to whether one's needed or not. And you know, the, the rule of thumb is, um, you're, you're notified at least a week in advance, if not soon, if not, um, sooner about the meeting. And so if you leave it like that, I could work with Andrea and say, okay, that, you know, we don't need a meeting this month, cancel it and go and do something else. If, if that's kind of what you're interested in. Cece, go ahead.
I was gonna say, in our case, because it's monthly and not bimonthly, that's exactly what we do. And we sit and we have the meeting, and let's say for the sake of argument, it's budget, because that's, everybody's got the same challenge.
Yeah.
So at the budget meeting, uh, we'll have up, we'll say, whoa, we didn't finish it off in our first session, so we're gonna schedule the second meeting, which is roughly two weeks. So what you're saying, Dave, makes basically the same timeframe that we have, uh, except that we just, because we meet every month and, and, and this would be the second monthly meeting, we, we had, we just have two weeks. Like, we, we've done it, uh, once this year already, uh, actually twice. We did it in January and February.
Yeah, there are, yeah, then there will be times in the year, well, it'll be important, budget being one, obviously. Um, and if, you know, you have to recruit a, 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 a new employee at a senior level that the, and that the board would be involved with, that would be another one. So there's all kinds of things going up, but if you want to leave it, and, and, uh, I, I think Lisa, thank you for raising this issue, because as I mentioned to you in the email, I've been toying with this for some time as well, thinking, you know, it takes, it takes a lot of time to get everybody together in these meetings. We could probably get through them fairly quickly. Um, and do we need one a month? So anyway, if you want to leave it this way, is that we'll keep them in our calendar. Um, and we'll start with the next month. Uh, the May, the May meeting, and, um, I'll let you know in advance whether or not we need to have it. I think there was something you said today, Andrea, that may, may require us to have it.
Yeah, we have the auditor, uh, on, incoming, um.
And that would, that would be a reason to have the meeting, obviously. Okay, let's leave it at that then. Um, and I'll, I'll get back to you if we have to change any of the meetings. We don't meet in July and August, so we've got that ahead of us. We may not have to have a meeting after the May meeting till the fall, depending on what happens in June. Okay, so I, I think that's it for today. Um, anything else? Anybody wants to add for the good of the cause? All right, I have a motion then that be it resolved at the April tenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting in Halliburton County Library, now adjourned. Just need a mover, please? Moved by Jen. Don't need a seconder, don't need to vote on it. Um, thank you all very much. Have a, have a great weekend.
Take care, everybody.
Yes.
You enjoyed the eclipse? I didn't see it, but.
We didn't down.